Good evening, welcome to the May 24th School Committee meeting. The school committee is just returning from executive session. All members are present except for Jason Maha. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our next item is our Student Representative Report. And recognition. Our last one of the year. Audrey and Maddie.
Well, good evening, thank you again for having us for our last student report this year. We're gonna start with our regular student report and then I want to introduce our Student Advisory Committee, who's here shadowing the meeting tonight. So, May kicked off this year with two weeks of AP testing and the WHS administering a total of 410 AP exams. This also marks the end of classes for any seniors who are taking AP classes. And then, we also had the band string concerts during the first week of May and ended the week with the district-wide art show, which showcased student work from art classes across the school district.
On May 5th, Spring Fling was hosted by the 9th and 10th grades, although everyone was invited. May 8th through the 12th was Teacher Appreciation Week and the PAC hosted a special teacher breakfast for the amazing staff at the school. That week also had an Italian field trip to the MFA and the North End, where they were able to see gorgeous art and eat authentic Italian food.
On May 9th, the Social Studies Department hosted the Freshman History Fair. Students chose their research topic, developed a thesis, and utilized various methods of presentation to share their work. Students and staff were then able to vote to award recognitions. May 9th was also Future Teacher Signing Day, which recognized eight WHS seniors who plan on pursuing careers in education.
Best Buddies held an Inclusion Week from May 8th through the 12th, with different Spirit Day clothing themes. A game of Human Hungry Hungry Hippos was played during W2 and the prize was that Mr. Miranda, Mr. Gendron, and Mr. Staffier were all pied in the face by the winners. On the Friday of that week was the Special Olympics, where students from WHS, WMS, the Wilmington Elementary Schools, and then the Burlington and Billerica Schools all came and played some wonderful games such as races, the long jump, there were some throwing games, and an obstacle course. And the special guest was Pat the Patriot and some New England cheerleaders, which was very cool, everyone was very excited about that.
Grade 10 MCAS took place on May 16th and 17th. And then there was a chorus performance on May 16th. Then Lamp Lighters Drama Guild presented the student-directed scenes on Wednesday, the 17th, where upperclassmen chose scenes from their favorite productions and produced them with small groups of students. And there is a jazz band performance on Thursday, the 18th. So it was a great week for performing arts. Seniors have also been working on their projects and internships over the past four weeks. Project presentations started today and will go through Friday. And then next Tuesday, there will be a Senior Internship Expo. There is also, believe it or not, an Instagram for this, as we have for everything, which is WHS underscore exploration 2023. So we've had some people posting what they've been working on in their internships or projects during this time.
The school is also currently working on implementing a new tool called My Flex Learning. It actually just started this Tuesday. So now during W2, students will sign up on My Flex Learning to go see a teacher. It's split into two blocks. And so they then sign up before, by 8:00 AM that day at least, to go and they will go to that teacher's classroom. This helps people make sure they are where they're supposed to be and getting work done. So they can still use W2 to do corrections, make up any work they missed, get extra help, but it's more structured now. And this Memorial Day, the Wildcat Band will once again be walking in the Memorial Day Parade and then playing at the ceremony that takes place after in the cemetery.
Senior Prom took place last Friday at the Danversport Yacht Club. And thank you to all the volunteers who organized our promenade and to our teacher chaperones. The World Language Award Ceremony took place yesterday during W2 to recognize student achievement on the national language exams and the SEAL of Literacy exam.
Yesterday evening was the NHS induction ceremony, where six seniors and 51 juniors were inducted. And seniors who were inducted last year were recognized as well. The Environmental Club hosted a school grounds cleanup yesterday and the previous Tuesday, where students cleaned up trash and litter in the surrounding area. The DECA Club also hosted their banquet, where they welcomed the new E-Board and said goodbye to seniors.
Next week will be Senior Week, which includes a trip to Six Flags, the senior breakfast and barbecue, the senior walk-through the elementary schools, and finally, the graduation ceremony on June 4th. So that's all for recent events. I would now like to take a moment to introduce our Student Advisory Committee for next year. This is the group who will be maintaining this important connection between the school committee and our student body by gathering information from students, presenting reports like this one, serving on subcommittees to the school committee, and ensuring that both student voices are heard in important district initiatives and that students are aware of what's happening here. So our Student Advisory Committee members are Maddie Benoit as our Chair, Jackson Kylie as the Vice Chair, Megan Smith as our Secretary, Zim Dehart as Faculty Relations, and Shivangi Tripathy as Student and Community Relations, with Ms. Bellavia as our Faculty Advisor. And we are currently working on subcommittee appointments within this group right now. So thank you all so much for your support this year in expanding this position and in continuing to form this connection next year. I'm really excited about it.
We're looking forward to it as well. Thank you so much, questions and comments? Jesse?
Very serious question. Please describe Hungry Hungry Hippos, real, live action. I can't, I'm having trouble envisioning it, but it sounds like it must have been pretty interesting.
So I unfortunately missed, I was taking AP exam. But, I know, I helped plan it, so students were on, do you know like the little scooters you would play on in elementary school?
Yeah.
So they were on that, everyone was wearing helmets, but they had laundry baskets and then they would have to go in, a partner would be behind them pushing them and they would have to get as many balls as they could in the laundry basket.
There's pictures on Instagram.
Yes, there is.
Of course.
There always is.
WHS underscore Hungry Hungry Hippos. Just make it up in your head, it'll probably be there.
That's great. Seriously though, thank you for all of the reports this year. It's been great having you guys, really appreciate all the, both the serious and the lighthearted insights. It's been really, it's really been a joy, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Comments? Thank you so much and also want to welcome the new members of the Student Advisory Committee. I think that that has been a real, a real asset to our committee this year to be putting this type of connection together and get a little more two-way communication between the school committee and our student body. And so I really look forward to building on what has already been built so far this year to next year. So, since this is the last High School Student Representatives Report, we do have a recognition for Maddie and Audrey for the wonderful job that they've been doing this year. And we have both. So, Amazon gift cards for both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Use them wisely.
Laundry baskets.
And then we also have certificates of recognition and they're also appreciated. So this is for Maddie.
Oh, thank you so much.
And this is for Audrey. And we will have Audrey for two more meetings.
Yes.
But this is still the last High School Representative Report.
Thank you.
So I wanted to thank you very much. Okay, and next we have freshman history fair presentation. Mr. Hackett.
Everybody?
Hello?
Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here, thanks for having me. So, happy to be here to share with you and the community an update on the hard work that the Social Studies Department has been doing this year on a variety of topics. And we'll highlight the freshman history fair, of course, in just a moment. But for starters, this year marks the completion of our transition to teaching global history, both in middle school and high school. So that was a culmination of really a decades-long worth of work, going back, Department Head Brian Carr, Mark Staffier, put a lot of work into that. So we instituted our final course this year, the US History in a Global Context III, the junior year course. And early signs are that this is going fantastic. Couple of measuring sticks to determine that. One, our students are making more global connections, you know, with their US history. We saw that in our sophomore research papers this year and we saw that in our freshman history fair topics. But secondly, we're making, covering a lot more ground, you know, with our history. We're studying more contemporary history than we ever have before, which was the other goal of this. So we have, our teachers right now, the four global, three teachers, they're approaching or are teaching 21st century topics already with three weeks to go. You know, we had one teacher teaching a US Patriot Act lesson as it relates to 9/11 today. So that's something we wouldn't have been able to do before this. We would have been bogged down Cold War Vietnam. So that's just great progress on that curriculum and we're excited to be able to have done that. Another quick update before the freshman history fair project is a quick update on the Civics Action Project. I think as you may know, the state passed a law requiring that students do a civics action project twice in their school career. Once in the 8th grade and then once again in high school. So the 8th grade implemented this project last year. Had some good success with it, made some adjustments, you know, this year going into year two. And then we plan to implement the project for the first time next year in our junior year course. The images that you can see up there are from Mr. Robinson's 8th grade class. Had the pleasure of watching that presentation, the bottom right image from a group of his students who presented to Mrs. Benoit's 6th grade class, their topic on racism, which was a, you know, very difficult topic and a very important topic. And it was great that Mr. Robinson asked them to do that. It was a nice showcase for the project, which is an enormous component of the project. But it also served as a nice preview for those 6th grade students to sort of know what they were gonna be looking forward to in the 8th grade. They also studied, there was a lot of mental health topics that the kids chose in the 8th grade, which I thought was really interesting. And then climate change was another big one that was chosen by a lot of those students. So, those students were guided to try to focus on the school level, but I thought it was pretty impressive that they were already in the 8th grade thinking beyond the school level. So we're excited to get that going at the high school next year. Our teachers have been working on some PD to prepare and we're ready to rock and roll. So now, the reason why I'm here, the freshman history fair. This is our 19th annual fair that we had this year. Goes back a long way. The goal of the project has always been to try and get students really invested in deeply analyzing their sources, finding credible sources, analyzing for bias, and then being able to use that bias and all that research to come to some reasoned judgment and inform a thesis statement and then create a final product of student choice. You know, so they could do a constructed project, they could create a website. We've had, as you'll see tonight, we've had some performances. So a lot of creative projects over the years. This year with the global perspective, we had topics like history of timekeeping. We had a global implications of the American Revolution. We had a scientific thinking versus ethical thinking topic, which was really neat. And then our first and second place winners, I'll call down Allison right now to start. Her project was on the evolution of music over time and she absolutely blew us away. And you can see Allison on the left there performing one of her, how many instruments that day?
That would have been, well, if you count my voice, that would have been, say, one, two, three instruments?
So I'll hand it over to Allison. She can tell you a little bit about her experience with the project.
So, my name is Allison Hall, I'm a freshman at Wilmington High School. As you can see, I did the evolution of music from 1200 to 1820. So, music was kind of subdivided into five major stages, so I could do the first four, the fifth is outside my timeframe. And I kind of gave an overview of some of the highlights of that time period and then I performed some type of music from that time period. For example, in the Middle Ages, the first one, I learned Gregorian chant. I learned how to read Gregorian chant and sang Salvi Regina as part of my presentation in Latin. And then for the Renaissance, I gave the overview of the Renaissance and how instruments were created. And that is Clear Cloudy, performed on viola. I'm a violin player, the viola worked better for this. And also, you can't quite see it there, but I played it in the style as I would in the Renaissance with a different bow grip and playing it kind of my own little iteration. And then I did the Baroque period, that was later. And I performed Solfeggiero on harpsichord, on electric piano. And then finally, I did the Classical period with Sonata by Mozart. So I said that the three most significant influences on the evolution of music from 1200 to 1820 were the church, the Renaissance, and the development of musical instruments. And I learned quite a bit from this project. I've always been really interested in music, I'm in strings, I'm in jazz band, I'm in the Soundscape Acapella Group, I'm in Drama Club. And, but I like, I really, I really kind of delved deep in this project because I kind of knew some of this going into it, but I really, like, I didn't know any specifics. I had no idea how to read Gregorian chant, so I found a very helpful YouTube video explaining it. And I learned it and I practiced the song. I learned kind of how to do my own research because it was very much like, find your sources, good luck! Like, I've been, I was kind of like in 8th grade, like it was very much like, okay, here's, answer this question, like it was very, very structured. Like, I didn't really have anything to kind of go for it myself, but like this was kind of, I was like, okay, I need to do this and this and this and like I need to, I need to take notes properly and I kind of, through trial and error, kind of figured out a good way to do that. And I learned how to see some sources and be like, mm, no. Like, one insisted that Mozart was from the Middle Ages, I'm like, no. Just no. And I am just very, very happy to be here. And thank you for your time. And then I'd also like to introduce Pranima Thapa, second place, for her amazing project. So, thank you very much.
Oh, wait a minute. I had a quick question. So, two questions actually. First one, out of the research you've done for this project, what would you say which era was more impactful to you or inspires you or that you felt more connected to, out of the four that you?
Significant to me or significant to music?
To you.
To me. I, I personally really like the Classical area. I'm a classical-trained pianist. I've been taking piano since I was six, I think, seven maybe. And like, I've always kind of done pieces like that. And I just, like, going through all the music, I was like, hey, I know that, I know that composer and that composer and that composer. I really, like, I really liked the ideals that embodied me as well, is kind of pulling from Greek humanism, also from the Renaissance. But I really, I just really liked the music in that time period.
Very good.
And your second question?
My second question was, so the fifth stage, I would presume is modern?
The Romantic era.
Romantic, oh, okay.
1820 to 1900s.
Oh, okay, alright. I was just curious as to what that encompassed, so.
Yeah, the Romantic era, I believe that encompassed composers such as Vivaldi, I want to say. I didn't, I didn't research this one because, well, it was outside my timeframe, so I was like, oh, okay. But it was kind of, you're starting to see slightly more modernized music, as you say. It wasn't exactly rock or anything like that. No hip-hop or anything.
I get it. No pop-rock either, so.
No, it's kind of just like another phase of music. You're starting to see more, more advances, especially in instrument making. Like, we'd already seen vowels and keys and such in the Classical. And, but this is kind of like starting to see more technological advancements.
I see, very good. Thank you, I was just curious, appreciate it.
Any questions?
Any other questions?
Fantastic, thank you. Nice job.
Congratulations. Absolutely fabulous.
Second place winner, Pranima, who did her project on the founder of Nepal. Another impressive one, image of her project is on the right there.
So, my name is Pranima Thapa and I came in second place at the 2023 freshman history fair. And my project was actually a three-part project. It had the main poster, which is up there. A map and a presentation centered around Prithvi Naransha, the father of my own country of origin, Nepal. I wanted to do Shah because I want to do something unique and meaningful. So I specifically picked out a name that nobody else would pick. And I chose him because it's also kind of a show of nationalism and pride for my country and my roots. And I was able to get like a lot of participating at this fair. I was able to get an A+. Most of all, I was able to share and explore my culture, something that defines me as a person, be recognized for it. And this fair has given me the opportunity to do so by allowing me the freedom to do whatever I want with any topic that I chose. Through this fair, I also gained newfound respect for our recently implemented US History from a Global Perspective course. And it allows us all to have insight, not just into US culture and history, but also those of foreign nations. This was something that many parents actually had commented on when they were seeing my project during the evening show. I actually saw this when I would talk about the Raj, which was the British colonization of India. And India's like right below Nepal, so it kind of had to do with my project. And many of them didn't know what that was, or even the caste system. And they said how they were offered the same and they appreciated how our school was actually evolving to shape more educated individuals, not just in the US curriculum, but also in a holistic international stance.
Fabulous, that's.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm Jay.
So I want to find, so, just explain to me, so are you from Nepal? Are you first generation?
Well, that's kind of like a blurry line for me because I was born in Nepal, but I didn't know when I was two, so.
Okay, well, so you're from, well, originally, okay. So, what can I ask you, from your project, and any aspect that you'd like to touch upon, what was the biggest surprise that kind of hit home for you in your discovery and research in creating this project? Was there anything that stands out that was kind of surprising and like, more, you know, impact? I'd be interested, because I think it's a beautiful culture, I'm not as familiar with it. But I like to watch the Mount Everest documentaries and the country is just absolutely beautiful. And you learned some about the culture, but what was the, what's the biggest thing? Even if you want to say, what's your favorite thing about your culture?
My culture of the project specifically? My culture, like, concerning the project?
Well, yeah, I probably, in general, yes. Well, open-ended question, drive it however you want.
Well, my favorite thing about the project was that I learned that he went around cutting people's noses off.
Oh, liars?
Not liars, but.
So I wonder how that little, there's a little saying that?
He actually first colonized this area. So Nepal was all like a bunch of little kingdoms. And what he actually did was he went through and united all those kingdoms by conquering it. And while the kingdoms really frustrated him because he had to go back three times before he conquered it, so when he did conquer it, he cut off people's noses.
For making them work extra hard, is that it?
And that kind of gave me some trouble because I was trying to argue that he was the father of a nation as opposed to being a tyrant, so. I kind of like tried to sugarcoat that.
You may have a Korean politics if you don't know it. I know, thank you very much.
Thank you. But, I guess, something that I really found interesting, like seriously, was that he was actually illiterate. And there's this primary source that I used, which is called Divya Uparash. It was written by monks in his name and it was like a book of kind of like quotes and lessons that he taught. And so I went through and like, I read some stuff, I translated some stuff. And there was like a bunch of stuff on foreign policy, which is something that really interests me today as well.
Good.
As like I named it, obviously, but.
Wonderful, absolutely fabulous. That's great, that's an open pathway, which I think is fabulous. Good for you, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Oh, wait, wait, no, don't go.
Can I just, before you go, I just, one quick question. Well, congratulations, clearly an award-winning project and presentation. But did you do the artwork as well? Because if so, you're also a very talented artist.
Thank you, and yeah, it took a really long time.
Well, you said it's like this big, right?
I'm this tall, my sister is this tall, I'm this tall.
Wow. Just, so just putting it together alone was an endeavor.
Beautifully done.
If you pay attention to his hand and his head, I actually put sticks on it to make it like stand up. So, one day, I had to like re-glue the tassel part. So I had to take it home, so I like beheaded him for a while.
Because he didn't have a nose.
Stick on the bottom so it kind of looked like a head on a steak. I was like carrying it around, but yeah. I still have it standing around my house, it's always doing this.
That's great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Ally and Pranima.
Thanks again, Allison, thanks, Pranima, great job, thank you for being here. And primary sources was a big piece of that project too. And I think Pranima and Allison both sort of pointed that out. We do encourage the students to ensure that they're not using just, you know, websites, that they're actually diving into the primary source documents. And this year's group did a job, across the board, did a phenomenal job of that, so. It was another great fair. And we're looking to expand it potentially next year. You know, we have sophomore research papers that we can highlight. We have the civics project coming, so this could potentially turn into a history fair and not just a freshman history fair in the future, so. Couple other quick updates for you and then I'll take off, get out of your hair. But the, there was another fair this year that I thought was worthy of mentioning. Mrs. Gazoni down at the middle school, for the last couple of years, has turned this into an annual event, where she has had an Ancient Greece Travel Fair. She asks her students to essentially pretend that they're travel agents, designing a full itinerary trip to Ancient Greece. They have to create a, it's like an eight to 10-day itinerary, a price, menus, destinations, you know, you name it. And then the fair, which you can see up the upper right-hand corner, is the school community coming in, parents coming in, and essentially deciding which trips they're going to purchase. And the trips that are purchased go into a ballot box and then, of course, there's a winner, whoever sold the most trips. But she has them get into the finances as well, whoever had a good bottom line and so forth and so on, so. I was really impressed with that. I spent the day down there and saw a lot of those kids, their energy and their passion for that and a lot of different, a lot of different takes on how to see Ancient Greece. It was really cool. And then, just briefly, a couple other field trips that the Social Studies Department has sponsored this year. Top left image was right here in this room. We had Holocaust survivor Janet Applefield come and talk to Mike Jones's WWII classes. That was about three weeks before we went to Germany. So it was really great timing for those students to get a good perspective on that. Her lived experiences were just beyond powerful to listen to and I think they left a pretty, pretty big impression on our students. Top right image, Kevin Riley, criminal justice class toward MCI Concord Prison. Couldn't take any pictures inside the prison, so they took a photo outside. And then later in the year, took them to the Mocley Courthouse to learn about the federal court system as well. Bottom right was from Student Government Day. Mike Maloney took two of our students, Grace Smith, Leanne Jurgens, into town for that annual event. They represented a local legislator for the day. Leanne even got up and spoke on behalf of a, you know, a mock bill in front of a mock legislative joint session, which was pretty impressive. So, pretty good stuff. And then, lastly, just, I know you guys have spent some time on this already last week, but I just want to personally thank our students for how they conducted themselves in Germany. That was an experience of a lifetime, I'm so proud of them. And I'm so appreciative for the work that Mike Jones and Mike Maloney put into that trip. Couldn't have done it without them. And you guys for supporting, you know, experiences like this because it was absolutely unbelievable and there's really no learning like it. So, thank you for that. With that, any, taking any questions?
So, thank you very much for all of this, the freshman history fair is fantastic. I've experienced that before as well. But in terms of the field trips, the one that was on the top left with Holocaust survivor, part of what I find so powerful about that is, we think of field trips as going someplace, but that was a field trip into her experience and her history and who she is and what she lived through. And so, field trips don't have to be someplace. It's a matter of a different sort of engagement with history. And so I find that one particularly to be a fantastic example of a really good idea that looks like it was really well-executed as well. So it's, I'm, that's fantastic.
Yeah, and Mike's been doing that for years. He had had WWII vets come in for a long time. Janet's come in, I think, for five, five, six years. They've had a relationship with her for a while. She's in her 90s now, she was a child during the Holocaust. But yeah, those, they're captivating stories. And you don't need to go anywhere, like you said, to experience those.
Well, and part of it also with her being in her 90s, that generation that survived is not going to be with us that much longer. And so these children who have now heard directly from her is so much more powerful than anyone reading it in a book. And so the more people that people such as her can talk to, the more we will remember these important events, so.
And to your point, that's actually the last thing that she said to the kids. She said, "All I ask is please go tell my story." So, thank you.
So I have to say that what's interesting, I've only met less than a handful of Holocaust survivors that they couldn't remember what happened in the 70s, 60s, or 50s, but they can recount days and times during that period of, where they were captive. And it's just, with such brilliancy and accuracy and detail, that it's, it is. And it's just with such brilliancy and accuracy and detail that it's, it is, it's just, it really sometimes is overwhelming to hear about the atrocities and the strength that, you know, that was born from that experience. Because, I mean, in the day where we see so much mental health and emotional disabilities, just that strength has to be immense to move forward and not let it define the rest of their lives. And regardless that it will always be a part of the fabric of their lives, but it's just, it really truly is something few people can really walk away and appreciate. And it's just, I can't quite articulate what I'd like to say, but I hope, I hope you know the intent.
No, and we experienced that with her. And some of the stories she told, the level of detail was as if it happened yesterday. It's so true.
Exactly.
Yeah. And then to be able to couple that with some of the experiences we had in Germany and kind of put those together, a lot of those students had that dual experience, which was just, to say it's profound is even understated.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Audrey?
I just wanted to thank you, what you're talking about with the civics projects, I thought was really awesome. And at the beginning of the year, when I went to this assembly with other student representatives across the state, that was actually one discussion we had. It was a lot of students were bringing up, we don't have enough civics education. It's not really built into our curriculums. So it's really cool to see that that's being added.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's exciting to see. I think our kids are going to enjoy doing it. We're going to allow them to really explore whatever topics they're interested in doing. We're not going to limit them to the community, although the community is fair game. You know, this is something every student across the state has to do. So there's a lot of wonderful opportunities to get out and join forces and make some change. But that's what the project's all about. It's not about doing a community service, you know, for instance, it's lasting change. They want to see systematic lasting change. They want kids to look at the root cause of a problem and create a plan to address it, which again is pretty powerful. It's more than just doing a report on a problem. So, yeah, good.
Dr. Bryson?
It sounds so similar to like a Girl Scout Gold Award, right? Where you have to pick some and it has to be sustainable and that's how you're rated. And it's exciting to see, I think sometimes our students get access to some of those scouting type, but they don't get access in school. So now everyone's having this opportunity to see their work come to life. So it's really great. And I just want to take a minute to thank you. I know you stepped into this role this year and these updates are great. I feel like we've been really made aware of what's happening in social studies. And I know you also chaperoned that trip, so we are grateful for all the work you've done this year and we're just really excited to have you sit at our table. So thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it very much.
I also want to echo the thanks, hearing all of these updates is, warms my heart in particular. History was my favorite subject in high school, my major in college. So to hear all these things happening around the social studies program in so many different ways, from just like the curricular in the classroom to all of this kind of beyond the classroom, is really gratifying. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hackett.
All right, we'll move into approval of items by consensus. First item is approval of minutes from our May 10, 2023 regular session. Motion from Ms. Burns and seconded by Dr. Bryson, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Next, we have the approval of the trip to Ireland from 2023, 2023, '24 school year. Do we, we had information in our packet about that. I don't know, Dr. Bren, do you want to say anything? It looks like Mr. Meloni is not.
Certainly briefly, yeah, the information is there and Mr. Maloney gave us a little bit of a tease last time he was here about a next overseas expedition, and you have that in front of you. So we are excited.
Hey. Good timing.
We're excited to welcome Mr. Maloney. There he is. Mr. Maloney, you're up. Right to the table.
Coming in to rescue Dr. Brand. He's freelancing.
Sorry, soccer meetings tonight. But in the library, so that was convenient.
All right, trip to Ireland for the 2023, '24 school year.
Yes, so again, it's coming to seek approval for June trip to Ireland next year. You guys have the packet in front of you, obviously. You know, I'm back again. We had a great trip to Germany and, you know, even, even taking 92 kids, there was, you know, a lot of kids who wanted to do it too. And I think having a travel program in a high school to be able to engage in experiential learning, we talked about it last week and you saw in action, I don't think there's anything that quite replicates that. So with the demand, with the excitement, I think it's good for, I think it's good for our students. It's something that we can offer that differentiates us from other places, keep kids in the district. And of course, going to Ireland, it comes up quite a bit in the social studies curriculum, the study of the potato famine, immigration, obviously, living in the city of Boston, local politics, that comes up in some of our classes. All those things are reflective. And this trip, we'll include going to Northern Ireland and the troubles and the Good Friday Accords. That comes up in our new Global History III course, which I'm sure Mr. Hackett just talked to you about, which we actually get through now. We get to the present day. So it'll be a little, I would say it's a little less heavy history than the trip with Germany. There's definitely a good deal of this trip focused on just seeing the beauty of Ireland. But obviously, those parts of the curriculum are interwoven within the, within the trip.
Mr. Turner?
Couple of quick, one, one or two questions. First of all, I think the idea is fantastic, the program and the choice all seems great. It is particularly costly. I'm assuming there'll be some level of aid if people need it.
So in the, there is like, so EF has a scholarship. Each student has the ability to fundraise on their own. I'm certainly not object to doing group fundraising or certainly reaching out to the community, right? If, if students who want to go, you know, can't, yeah.
That is a concern with this sort of thing. I mean, $4,000 is a lot.
It is, yeah, I agree.
And it, even, even the Peru trip that was brought up earlier, the year's $3,500. And there's reasons why that one's, why this one might be more expensive. But then can you talk a little bit about the idea of doing it the week after school?
Yeah, so weather-wise in Ireland, it's going to be a little better time of year.
It's their only time if you're.
Yeah. And also like just, you know, knowing that like, you know, I've started this up again and going in April is a challenge with my, I have a fifth grader and a third grader who are extraordinarily busy. I don't even know where my daughter's at, basketball or soccer, I don't know where she is. So going in the, going in June, I thought provided an opportunity, and also for some of our spring athletes. I know like this year, some of them couldn't come, some of them came and that wasn't necessarily, that was challenging for them with their coaches. You know, obviously, one of the, you know, we will allow seniors who graduate to go and that's obviously, you know, maybe somewhat of a different situation. I've talked to teachers, other schools have done it. You know, they still have to agree to all of the EF policies. They're going as a member of Wilmington Public Schools. They'd have to still abide by all of those things. So that, that's kind of the June reason.
And then the one last question is, I understand there's an informational session tomorrow in the evening.
Correct.
I understand it's first come, first served for people there.
It's, we're going to, so everyone who signed up as an RSVP will get the email at the exact same time, whether you're there, whether you're not.
Okay, because I know there's other events happening tonight, that same night, and so some people won't be able to attend.
I spoke to a mother today that, at the Strings concert, but we're going to send the, you know, send the, send the email out. And again, last time, Mr. Hackett, I'll see what he thinks of this, but we obviously had quite a bit of interest last time. And we originally were going to do 45 kids. And we had, you know, 50 kids on the waitlist, so we just went two buses again. I'm certainly not against, against doing that as well. So if we have, if it sells out again like a, you know, a concert back in the nineties, you know, we definitely can go to two buses again too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have to, very excited to see that the Titanic, there's a Titanic, oops, I messed up my thing. I love the Titanic area. I was lucky to go over to Dublin a couple of years ago to see that, the exhibits in certain areas. I think that's absolutely fabulous. Big fan of Kilkenny myself as well. So a quick question.
Sure.
So I didn't see in the itinerary any visits to like castles, like Bunratty's Castle. You know, you're over in Ireland, you might as well kiss the Blarney Stone, right?
Yeah, so we aren't headed that far south. Now, I was hemming and hawing between, they have two different versions of the, well, actually, they have like four different versions. One's agriculture-based. I didn't think there'd be a big, big, yeah, for that one, for the kids to work on the trip. But I want a Northern Ireland to be part of it.
Yeah.
Just because it can tie into our curriculum. So that's why we're not, basically going west.
Right, right.
And like the Aran Islands, then we'll head north. So we won't get down to the.
So you're flying, so it's, what I found odd too is that you're kind of going down then up around.
Big loop.
Well, but you're not going, you're not doing the.
We're not doing the south, yeah. We're going west and up and down.
Exactly. And I'm like, because there's another airport on the other side. You know what I mean? That you could have, you know, done one of the loops that way, which I thought, but I mean, I just think it's absolutely beautiful if I'm not.
There was a way to do that and then add a couple extra days, but that, the costs, again, you're talking about, you're talking about adding a few days to the trip, which would make it, you know, even more, even more expensive.
No, of course, of course. And there's, the Irish culture is just so rich with writers and, you know, in the arts and music, you know, that Celtic, that's, I would have loved to, you know, I mean, you can only do so much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, but that's just another, I'm hoping that maybe perhaps leading up to that, that the English department might, you know, kind of incorporate.
Sure.
That, because I think there's some great literature of that, you know, Irish writers.
And we've definitely, like from when we, because obviously we had like quite a bit of time between when we signed up to go to Germany and we actually went. So it was, it was really easy to, as I said last time, get, you know, almost all the kids take Mike Jones' World War II class. I know John Lewis worked in some Vonnegut into his curriculum. And I don't think it would be a challenge to get some of my colleagues in the English department to, you know, and I assume they'd probably do some James Joyce and Pope, you know, some poetry and stuff. So I assume they'll, they're, they're pretty good with that too. So we'll have some time.
Awesome, no, I'm very happy. Jealous, but I'm very happy. Chaperones go for free?
Yeah, so do you let me know?
All right, Mike.
Audrey first and then I'll go. Thank you.
So my main concern would be what you said about it being first come, first served, because I was there for the Germany one when people were applying. And I just remember it being very chaotic. I think it filled up in what, 20 minutes?
It was pretty quick, yeah.
And I know a lot of people like were busy or something. I know a friend who was at dancing couldn't get in. And then also, like Mr. Turner mentioned, the price of it, and that's something that, a discussion that families would need to have in deciding whether they could do it. So I think two thoughts I had would, one, still doing first come, first served, but not having it open right after the meeting again, maybe have it open a week later. So there's time for families or just having an application process, like a minimal one, but where it's not first come, first served. Have those been considered?
So with regard to like the, you know, the opening up the window a little longer, with this being, you know, again, my intent wasn't necessarily to plan another one for next year. You know, I said, based on the interest and based on the success of this one, you know, I thought it'd be a good idea to do it. So obviously, we get a little less time period anyway to work with. EF does offer some like early enrollment, like discounts, going back to the price. So kicking in a week, that, we might not be able to get that May price. And I don't, and the application thing, we actually kind of somewhat talked about this, but I don't know if there's a way to make that fair. I mean, I, you know, it's, I don't know all the students. I don't know, I think that would be a potentially a time, a time-consuming activity that I don't know would necessarily lead to any more fairness. I guess that would be my concern with that. And as I said, I mean, ultimately, for the last trip, everyone who wanted to go was able to go. Students who were on the waitlist ended up having an opportunity to go, some chose not to. We actually had a few kids sign up. I think our last student to sign up, signed up in December, like right before the hard deadline. So in terms of making it accessible to everyone who wants to go, I think that that worked out with the Germany trip and just based on like the RSVPs and numbers for that, it's not quite the demand. So hopefully that.
Is it possible to bump it like 24 hours after the meeting? Just to allow, so people don't feel like they have to jump in right away without even taking it?
Yeah, so they can, so I can, sure, I can certainly, certainly ask and that's a reasonable, certainly I think a reasonable solution.
I think so.
You do have until June 2nd, once you sign up, to de-enroll and get all your, get your deposit back. You put down a minimal deposit to start. But I don't see why, if that's the will of the committee, I certainly think we could probably, I can talk to them. They, I talked to our representative from EF today and they did do like a little bit of a extended rebate, you know, if you signed up that night. I think part of, part of their idea, and I don't know if I necessarily fully understand it, but the idea is that you, people are excited, they come to the meeting, they want to sign up. And if you let that go, maybe, and maybe they, maybe they don't, you know, they don't want to go or I'm not sure. I'm sure there's some sort of reason for it, but.
Two questions. One from Jay Samaha, which you've covered already regarding seniors, but for a question sort of, they're not going to be students any longer, so I guess Dr. Brand, is that okay? He's kind of like, is that okay? They won't officially be Wilmington Public School students and will that work all right?
I don't see that, because of the, I don't see that to be an issue. I think there's other examples, although I can't think that, this in the moment where there would be other circumstances in which past students, you know, might participate in some activities. So I think the expectation that EF sets out and of course, you know, and you don't want to go there, but just like it would be for any other case or any other situation, which if a student was not complying with the expectations, they would be, in this case, as a trip, would be, would be asked to return home. That's always certainly something like we would do with any other student in any other circumstance.
And then my question, I was so excited to see this, as I think I emailed you right away and said, Ireland, what? I was so excited. My concern as, as a parent of an upcoming freshman is, are you going to be able to maintain this momentum, right? Like he's not going to be eligible and I'm like, ugh. And my fear is, we've got all this energy, we've got all this excitement, we're doing boom, boom, Peru, this one, that one, and all of a sudden, he's a junior and everyone's like exhausted. And I'm like, no, there's trips. And he's like, where are the trips? So how do you maintain this momentum, I guess?
I think that, that was like my big reason for agreeing to do it again, you know, this year was to keep the momentum going. In the past, like prior to COVID, some of you have been around for, been on the school committee for a while, like we had trips pretty regularly, a pretty good stable of teachers who would, who would offer these. And I think the more kind of well it goes, I think the more willing other folks, I know that I've, I've had teachers who didn't chaperon this one, who said, what about the next one? I'm like, awesome, what about you planning one? And I can be pretty, I can be pretty good at helping them out and, you know, trying to encourage that. But the goal, my goal, I can't necessarily commit to doing it every year, see what my wife says. But I think it's something that we should offer every year at least. And I'm willing, I'll be here for another 17 or 18 years, so.
I'm going to hold you to that.
So I certainly will be a supporter of the, even if I'm not directly leading all of them, I'll be encouraging folks to. I think, as I said, I think that's just, having never, I think I said this when I was here, two, three years ago, whenever we, whenever we approved the Germany trip, like I never really did anything like this until I was an adult, until I was in grad school at Salem State and studying history my whole life and majoring in it. And I can't believe I didn't. And once you, once you do it, I feel like it's something you just want to, you want to keep doing yourself, but also share with your students, so.
I do agree with what Audrey said. I do think the 24-hour window would be, 24-hour delay would be more equitable for all the different folks. And it gives everyone a chance to at least think about it. And to the, to the level of excitement, I think there's, if the provider has a concern about it, I think, I think we'll make 45. And then, and the other thing to Dr. Bryson's point, I do think you being a role model to thing, to Dr. Bryson's point, I do think you being a role model to the other teachers, so that it isn't you every year, it doesn't have to be you every year, you can keep doing it every year if you want to. But, but being, being able to write down some of your notes and some of your experiences and guide the other folks, I think is a fantastic thing for, for other folks as well, because I, there could be a lot of different people who could lead these sorts of trips.
Yeah. And I, and I learned from Maury Tucker and Marissa Mulligan, who I chaperoned when they ran tours. So it, there's definitely been a cyclical nature of this, so.
I'm jumping for it here. I, I like, my mind was going kind of where Mr. Turner was going, that I think that to make this kind of sustainable and be able to keep this momentum, that, I don't know that it needs to be like a, you know, an official professional development session or like a Wilmington University course or something, but something that kind of disseminates some of the, hey, are you interested maybe in, you know, in planning a trip? Here's kind of the basics of it. And because the more, you know, the longer the people kind of just think about, like, all right, so these are the steps, then, you know, sometimes it takes a while for ideas and motivation to germinate. But like, if, if they know that there are resources and there's support behind that, then that, I think, will, will help sustain this type of thing going into the future. Okay?
I do have to say, what I've enjoyed, especially with the Germany presentation, is the students coming back and presenting to us slowly, people who weren't able to participate, but would love to go one day. But I really do think that that is, I love hearing about their stories and the impact the trip has had on them. But I also think it is a, a method, because the, the best way to facilitate excitement is build the momentum.
Yeah.
And to hear and to see where their, their peers have gone and done and blasted it was and whatnot, I think opens up that intrigue and interest and a sense of adventure. I think every kid has a sense of adventure to a certain extent. But I, I do think presenting in, it was just so wonderfully done. And I really enjoyed listening to it and just fascinated by the places and the stories that, and how they, it impacted three different students, you know what I mean, in their ways. And I thought it was just so well done. And that, in years past, really hadn't been done. You had the, the, the staff member who hosted the, the trip come and say, well, we did this, we did this, we did this, we did this, almost like justifying it, but it was no real, and I thought that was great, but there was no, what I, what I like to see is just, and I think maybe some of us, I'd like to see how this impacts our students, because it just, again, it, not that I would ever turn away someone wanting to expand one's, our students', you know, students' mind, but I, I just, I do, it's great to see our students evolving, even over the four years that they're at the high school and the middle school and that process. Well, I think I've, I've been here a little long to see that evolution. But it, I, I just, it benefits, it just benefits decision, our decision-making and knowing this is, it's a solid and it's a wonderful opportunity that is, it's not, what's the word? That it's, it's exceptional, because not everyone does it, is what I'm saying. So to have that opportunity here and to offer to our students is exceptional, and I thank you, I do. I thank you, because I know it's very time-consuming and, you know.
It is, but it's certainly worth it. And I said, we had five of the students come, and we could have had all 90 of them. They, you know, I think all of them had their own personal, you know, connection and journey to it, and a couple more here today. And they've been the best salespeople for, like, the next trip. They're not, they're not coming to hang out with me, they're coming to travel. And their, their peers who've gone on this, who went on this Germany trip. And, you know, especially after the long period of time where we didn't know we could do anything like this, I think it's great to have it back, so.
Mr. McCauley?
Yeah, so, hey, just a quick question. So this is great, taking the kids on the trips and everything. Because it's going to be in June, and I was hearing there's a waitlist for Germany, do you feel there's going to be maybe more of demand? And then could you expand that demand, because it's going to be in that June timeframe? All the sports are done, all the other activities are done, kids' jobs may not have started, or they're not working, they got nothing to do, you know?
And that's, you know, part of the day, too, to open it up. Yeah, I mean, I, so Mr. Jones and I, as part of our training through the company for this, went to, went to, went to Madrid with EF, and we met people who've run these double buses for a long time. Some of them run triple buses. I don't think, I don't necessarily know that that would, would happen. I don't know if we had quite that much interest. But, you know, obviously, the, the challenge, when you get, start getting bigger than two buses, is, you know, finding a second and a third person to, to lead those buses. But, yeah, I, I don't think shutting a kid who wants to go out of it is the, is the right way to do it. And then hopefully, as I said, one of the things I tried to do with big waitlists last time, and I think some of them ended up doing it, is the Peru trip got planned. I think some of those students who were on the waitlist for Germany ended up getting on the Peru trip. So going back to what, what Dave and Stephen were saying, is we get more, you know, hey, I have 20 kids who want to come to Ireland. Right now, we don't have spots for them. What are you thinking? Maybe you can plan something, so. I think that builds into that as well.
All right, good. Good to hear.
I would entertain a motion to approve the trip to Ireland.
Salute.
Motion by Mrs. Burns, second by Mr. Fennelly, all in favor. And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have disposal of OIT surplus equipment. Do I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Turner, second from Dr. Bryson, all in favor. And that is unanimous. And now we have some warrants. So we have general 47 and 48 revolving 50, 51, and 52, local 83, 84, 85, and 86, food service 58, 59, 60, and 61. Motion by Mr. Fennelly, second by Ms. Burns, all in favor. That is unanimous. We have circuit breaker 12, motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Fennelly, all in favor. And that is, all except Ms. Burns abstaining. Then we have payroll for 524, 23, that's today. Motion by Mr. Fennelly, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor. And that's unanimous. And then lastly, we have warrants, special education 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55. Motion by Dr. Bryson, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor. And that is, everyone except, again, Mrs. Burns abstaining. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Three items under this part of the agenda tonight, all that include inclusions in the packet of backup materials or information, and I'll go in order, starting with the superintendent's evaluation, 2022, 2023 progress reports. So I first want to start by thanking Ms. Ingersoll, who's helped extensively pull this, this together. Last year was the first year, I believe, if I recall, in which I tried it, with some conversation and discussion here, a request to pull together direct links to some of the many artifacts and such that I felt was appropriate to pull together, to try and provide a glimpse into some of the various activities that have taken place over the course of the last year. The effort here was to try again, similar to last year, assemble a variety of examples that fell, that fall, rather, under the four specific standards. And so, as members of the committee know, this evaluation process is very much in line with and follows the Massachusetts Department of Education's evaluation model for superintendents. That's the process that we've been using here in the district since my, my time, and that continues. The, the examples of evidence were, tried to align with the various four standards in, in order. Instructional leadership is standard number one, standard number two, management and operations, standard number three, family and community engagement, and standard number four, professional culture. There's definitely some overlap when it comes to, you know, so many of these items, but it, it was my effort to try and align them with the specific standard that seemed to be more applicable. And the document, I know it's, there's a lot of information in here, so I, I do certainly acknowledge that. But hopefully, it provides for you as a committee, and for any interested members of the community, an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper, if interested in some of the, the various, the various activities and endeavors that have, have taken place over the course of the last year. I should point out that all of the work respectively in here is not directly driven necessarily by myself or my work in this role. A lot of it does, but certainly also a lot of it is, as a part of the good work for other members of the central office leadership team and/or members of the district leadership team. So I certainly want to call attention to that. But I think that, hopefully, you'll see this as, again, a, a window in terms of some of the various work that has been consistent with either our strategic plan, my own goals, or just priorities of the district. The, speaking of goals, towards the end of the document was an effort to try and isolate specifically on the various goals that I presented to you as a committee at the beginning of the school year and to which you approved. And again, with the similar format, tried to pull together examples that could, or I thought spoke to the progress of those goals over the course of the last number of years. As mentioned to you, I think it was back in March, well, I felt like there was some, some good progress on many of the goals. There was some, there were some limitations in terms of time and ability to follow through on all of those that I had originally hoped for and established. We talked about that in March, and I tried to point out and bring attention to that in this report to you with this report. So I'll pause there. I don't have a presentation to go along with this tonight, but certainly welcome any questions, comments, or feedback that you might have for me at this point in time, so.
Mr. McCauley?
Yeah, sure. So thanks for compiling this. It's quite comprehensive. I did read through and clicked on all those links and everything, so it was, it was good to read. What would you say are the most impactful accomplishments you made so far and why?
Well, not necessarily in any particular order, but I think, I think first off, the, the work that, well, maybe I will go in order in terms of instructional leadership. I mean, I, with great credit given to my colleague over here, Ms. Elliott, you know, she has, and I think that the, the evidence speaks to this, worked really, really hard to bring coherence. We were talking earlier, for those of you who were here earlier tonight, around the vertical and articulate, vertical and horizontal articulation and alignment of curriculum. And also, the, the robust utilization of data that she's led with, with principles throughout the district, I think is, is really taking, taking our school system, starting first at the elementary level, but progressing to the secondary level, to a whole different point and a place and time. So I, I can't take credit for that, but certainly want to acknowledge Ms. Elliott's efforts and, and the support that I know that she has from other members of, of our team. There's no question that the Massachusetts School Building Authority project and the Wildwood project has been far more consuming than perhaps would have been anticipated a year ago or even in the, in the fall. And so, that's certainly why, and I think reflective of a lot of the examples that I tried to include in here. Not to utilize that as an excuse in any way, but it, it has been, it's been a lot. It's been a lot, not just for myself, but certainly others around this table, to manage and to be a part of. And so, you know, it was work that not necessarily was a goal that stood there, but certainly, I think, a clear necessity for our school system to try and attend to. So I guess where we're landing with that, and now a short-term plan for Wildwood, I think will have some substantial impact for our Wildwood families and staff going forward. The program review at the middle school has obviously been a focal point of a lot of our conversations here. Again, that's not something that I alone take credit for, but that has coalesced a lot of attention and planning that will continue and will be, I know, talking about in the future, not just with Dr. Quirk and her leadership team, but Ms. Elliott as well, as MTSS is just one, one front and center example, makes its way to the middle school. So I would, I would bring attention to that, too. And then, of course, the strategic plan and, you know, formalizing our foundation, the footprint for the next plan going forward, that certainly, that was an important goal at the outset of the school year. And we're getting there, and we should be in a good place as we look to start next school year.
Great, thanks. Just a follow-up. So thinking ahead towards next school year, what do you think would be some of the key initiatives you, you want to focus on next year?
Well, I, you know, I won't, I'll start with the, the strategic plan. Clearly, what comes from that plan will, in turn, I fully expect, will have to be areas of priority that will either be part of my goals that I'll propose to you, and/or will find their way into our school improvement plans. So certainly that, that sits there front and center. And that, that spans an awful lot of potential work throughout the school system, of course. It's not necessarily going to be a goal, but there is no escaping the fact that now we are, we are into the MSBA process, and we are at the beginning phases of that. And there will be an awful lot of work that's going to come within the scope of the next or span of the next year. And while we have folks on board to help aid that work with our consultant, SMMA, and Doran Whittier, I know from past experience that there will be an awful lot of necessary coordination and support from members of the central office team to work with our partners in this project. So again, I'm not suggesting it should or will emerge as a goal, but it is going to be a tremendous amount of time and attention and energy going forward. So I think that those, broadly speaking, those, those two areas will, will certainly be critical, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a point, because we've got to do the mid-cycle review, I guess, if they're due for next, is it next week?
I think that.
When is it? June?
28th, 28th of June.
Oh, 28th, oh, so we have time, okay. All right, I thought, all right. Then I'm, all right, no worries. Are we, I know in 2021, we used a mid-cycle review form. Will, will that be similar, sent out to us beforehand with your goals and just that? I mean, it looks like a specific form.
Yes, that, that started, Dr. Bryson has started that, and we will, we will work to finalize that and get that to you as a, as a committee for that purpose.
Thank you so very much.
Well, and just on those dates, the 28th is the report out, but there are dates for when those reports are due to the subcommittee.
Right.
It's not the 28th.
Right. So I think that's what I was.
That's what you need to know.
Right, I'm trying to, yeah.
So I feel like I saw them very recently here. Did I not see them in here somewhere?
I, I thought I saw them, too, but I.
We had originally said that we were looking to get feedback in by June 2nd.
Which is next week.
Which is, which is next Friday. So I, I don't know if we're going to make that deadline, so we might have to look at the.
That was based on going with the June 14th report, though. So we shifted it. But I do believe I saw a date somewhere, I'm just not seeing them in this packet, but I do believe that dates were sent. Maybe Tracy sent them out.
I just want to make sure I can plan accordingly.
So I would say, so this, this evaluation report is just about finished. I think there was something that wasn't quite right, and I'm trying to, Dr. Brand, figure out what that is exactly. So I'm going to leave some comments in there to make sure that I'm looking at the right documents. And then I imagine that'll be sent, that'll be sent out to all of you by Friday.
Okay, thank you very.
And then you probably have over a week to get that into us, and then we'll make sure those dates go out.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Questions, comments? All right.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Item B is new liaisons for the 2023, '24 school year, and I'll turn that over, this over to Ms. Elliott.
Sure. So happy to announce that we have two new people, well, not new to Wilmington, but stepping into new roles for the start of the next school year. Michael Ferrara will be our new performing arts liaison. He's taking over the reins from Anita DeLulo as she steps down and lets him take this position for next year. He has extensive experience in general music, chorus, theater, theater drama club, music theory, American music, so he's covered the gamut, instrumental band, et cetera. So we are excited to bring him on as the performing arts liaison for next year, and appreciate all that Anita contribute to that department over the years. And Lena Phillips will be the new visual arts liaison, starting in the next school year, replacing Megan Hinman, Hinman, who is stepping down from that role. Lena joined Wilmington in 2017. She served as an art teacher both at the middle school and at West, where she currently is working. And she has a strong understanding of curriculum design. She's really excited to support the department with that vertical alignment and curriculum development K-12. So I am excited and happy to have both Michael and Lena on board and express my appreciation to both Anita and Megan for their contributions as well.
Mr. Bryson?
Okay. Great, thank you, Ms. Elliott. This time of the year is, it's both a busy one, but certainly, as we set to wind down, a really enjoyable one for so many great events to celebrate and look forward to. Item C is just one of those. In your packet is, and I tweeted this out, but clearly I need to develop an Instagram account. That should be available for next year. The, the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association, or MBSA, is, is a group that we are a part of. And for the past 14 years, this organization has sought to recognize two students from all of the member district high schools, again, of which we are one. And Mr. Gendron and I had the, the great opportunity to attend that luncheon last week. And congratulations goes out to two of our Wilmington High School students who were selected for the, as this year's recipients of the superintendent's award for the scholars' recognition. Cameron Forsyth and Owen Mitchell, again, two seniors here at Wilmington High School. Shout-outs to them for their amazing accomplishments and work. You can see in the packet the item that highlights some of their, their accomplishments as students here in the Wilmington community, and where they are heading next and the next step in their journey to become young and contributing members of our society. So it was a great, a great luncheon and wonderful to get to meet and get to know their families respectively better. Also, just to give a shout-out to, for, and a congratulations to all of our members we heard earlier tonight, from the National Honor Society celebration and ceremony yesterday. And for those that may not be aware, there was an honorary membership given last night, as voted by the officers, to our new principal here at the high school, Mr. Gendron. So a shout-out to him. That was a touching moment and a tribute to his, his great work and leadership here in our Wilmington community over the course of the last year. And that is it for the superintendent's report tonight.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that will take us to new business. And our first item is tiered interventions for chronic absenteeism.
Certainly, thank you. And if this looks familiar, you're not wrong. It was in the packet last time. We just passed over it. Time was not on our side last, last time. But I, I wanted to just bring to the. But I, I wanted to just bring to the attention of the committee and our community something that I think is emerging as an important area for us to focus quickly on here as we prepare for our arrival for the start of next school year. This memo that accompanies this item is entitled Tiered Interventions for School Avoidance. It is not at all unique, seemingly, from the reports we see and the data that seems to be circulating around throughout the Commonwealth, of the growing concern around student absenteeism in school. Specifically, seemingly, things have changed and gotten more concerning, or become more concerning, post pandemic. And again, from all that I can tell and from all that I understand, this is not just specifically a Wilmington challenge, and I would point to the very fact that our SEAM collaborative recently felt compelled to hold a, a specific workshop for member districts around this very thing, and how to try and pull together and solidify some possible practices going forward to try and get at this. I, I point out those, and I want to thank the many, many representatives from the Wilmington Public Schools who attended this workshop recently. I won't read their names, but you can see them there. We had representation across the school system at all levels, so that was, that was great. This was a workshop back in March, and there was an awful lot of material and information that came out of this workshop. But I will tell you, it was one of those very interesting and rather sometimes unique experiences where you often send folks out and they come back from a workshop or conference, and you never really know how it resonated with them or what their takeaways were. Universally, all of them came back, not only, I guess, excited, if you will, but also with a level of commitment to say, we've got to do something here about this. This has given us some tools and some ideas to try and roll up our sleeves and do that, and try and address, again, what is this issue around absenteeism. The memo, as you can see, goes out to outline some of the goals of the workshop in terms of making sure that we are working from the same level of understanding around what absenteeism is, school avoidance is or is not. Workshop dove into trying to, as a school system, as a school, developing systematic procedures for identifying and monitoring chronic absenteeism, and then creating those strategies district wide that could help support students at, at, at risk of school attendance. The research is fairly deep in terms of what absences from school can lead to, how that can impact a child's academic development and, and their, their ability to make gains. I cite just some of the many, many points that are problematic as it relates to chronic absenteeism. There's a little bit of data there around our district compared to Massachusetts, and there's a lot of data that comes with this issue. This is just scraping the surface, certainly. But there's no question, again, as mentioned earlier, that this, the level of absenteeism across the state has risen. The statistic that I, I noted from this workshop was from between two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one, the overall rate of chronic absenteeism rose by five percent across the state. The packet includes a snapshot, just to start to peel back the layers, and this is from our new, I'm drawing a blank on the name.
Open Architects.
Thank you, Open Architects system that is really a powerful resource that we now have with a whole host of data at our fingertips, not just about student attendance. We, Ms. Elliott spoken about this previously. But this is a snapshot, there's a lot of data here, a lot of, a lot of points to consider, but for attendance specifically from the Wilmington Public Schools, gives you a whole host of range by attendance by week. And this, this was really just included here for some context setting. It doesn't show baseline per se, but it, it, it's, it's, there's a lot of data that we can have accessible and at our fingertips. I had the opportunity, or I pulled together, took the opportunity, rather, to meet with the people who attended this workshop. We had a debrief session shortly after they attended. Again, it was clear that they had an awful lot that they wanted to talk about, and they wanted to start to think and plan about. And so on the last page of the memo is their, their respective and my recommendations around next steps of what, where we might go with this, and leveraging what they took away from this workshop and other best practices and ideas. First off to, we have not done this yet, but there's intention absolutely to pull together a district-wide student attendance team. We think that there's a lot of different stakeholders that can be a part of that team, and starting with a review of our internal practices. Sometimes with eight schools, sometimes we don't necessarily employ all of the same consistencies of practices, or coding, or how we're handling this. That's not to lay fault or point blame, but it's likely true. When you have eight of anything, right, it's not always going to be the same. There's a strong recognition that we better, we better gather together to make sure that what we're doing and how we're doing it, and what we're tracking and how we're recording it is consistent across all of our schools. Second recommendation is with this team to develop a systematic monitoring process of the data at both the school and district levels, and that development of procedures that can be equally and consistently applied across all schools. Second recommendation is for us to review, as we would be doing anyway at this time of the year, getting ready for next year, but to review our student and family handbook language regarding student attendance, our policies and practices. And there is a policy, the third point, that the school committee has in place, as do, I would suggest, probably most districts, around attendance, and it was the recommendation of the group that it would be in our best interest just to take a look at that and any changes at the state level recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So this is really intended to be informational, not looking for any specific action or, or vote by the committee, but really just to try and hone your attention in or focus your attention on this, something that I think we need to take some, some steps towards. Obviously, there is an intersection with your policy, and I'd like to suggest that the Policy Review Committee convene to take a look at that. So I'll stop there, and any questions that you might have.
Just one, Dr. Brand, if I could, and you may have said this, and if you did, I apologize I missed it, but, you know, for, maybe for folks who are watching at home or catch up on this later, could you define chronic absenteeism?
Yeah, that's a great question. So did I include this in the packet? I don't think I did, did I? But it is more, more than ten percent, right?
So on the slides that you're seeing, the bar is set, you can see at the top left-hand side, the chronic absentee bar is ten percent that's set here, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, does that align with the state's percentage for determining it for DSE?
Yes. That is how DSE defines it for the accountability system.
Correct, so we aligned it with that to match, to, to have that consistency.
Missing eighteen or more days of school.
Correct, one hundred and eighty days, so eighteen or more is chronically absent.
So, and then just to follow up, looking at this, if it's set to ten percent, we're saying that twelve point four percent of our students have missed that, have hit that ten percent, though, okay.
Correct.
And just to note, if I made, right, this was not to date, I should point that out, this was earlier in May.
The eighth third.
When this day was, data was pulled, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Burns.
So I, considering what we've seen, the ramifications post COVID, I think this is an area that does actually need more attention than, than previous times, I do think. And I know we've chatted back and forth in preparation for this coming before the board. I, I do think that, and I think this is a great system, all the details, but I, I think breaking these percentages down to actual student bodies brings a realism that these are, these are kids, although we can't put the faces to it, but I think that represents, I, I would rather like to get a better idea of how many students are impacted. And I know that it adds ethnicity and special education and, but those are like special education, and even like with state testing and such, those high-risk students are the biggest gap, and they're, and they're the highest to drop out of school, they're the highest to go MIA and not progress post, you know, post-secondary. So I think breaking those numbers down and finding where the largest gaps are in the absenteeism world as it pertains to Wilmington, because I think you may find some larger gaps in certain, whether it be some of the, the demographics. And I think that's where, I think, starting the process may, you know, may compartmentalize a little bit, starting where the biggest gaps are, biggest holes are, where students are absent, and then working, working in, I guess, towards that. Because I think there's going to be a, a consistency in a certain demographic areas.
One of the things that I realize, you know, I wrote this memo a little while ago now for the last packet, but one of the things that certainly occurs to me that I didn't include in here, but it should be said, is that in no way is it my thought of the teams, that just a modification or, or an alignment of practice internally, with the coding, the recording is going to change this in and of itself. Certainly, there has to be, that, that's a, that's a starting point, but there obviously has to come with that, our response for when there are issues, and separating those that may not need to necessarily be attended to, given the particular circumstance of a child's situation, but for where there is not necessarily a reason or rationale, how do we respond to that in a systematic way, with the help of, whether it's our family engagement specialists, our school counselors, or community resources to help try and influence a change. So it's far more than policy or handbook language, that's one piece of it, but there's got to be more that comes from this, including the education, obviously, of our, of our families, to bring to their attention the critical importance of regular attendance at school. Mr. Tarnick?
I didn't. Of course.
Sorry. Did you just do that?
No, I said, I was not, I had my hand up, but I had to stand at the same time, and I felt badly that I was busy.
I thought you were helping.
No.
Sorry. So two quick things. One, first of all, I'm very, very glad, coming out of our last budget cycle, that the family engagement specialists are available to this. We might find in this process, we might need one more, you know? I think their role in this process, challenge is, is going to be critical. The one thing that I, we probably don't have the historic data, which is unfortunate, and I'm not even sure we can accurately get it in the future, but understanding the sources, is it home and economic instability? Is it physical illness? Is it mental health illness? And understanding what portion of those things play a part and why kids are not here. Certainly, if you, I would, I would expect that there's intersections between some of the, some of the categories that we are able to get data on, and particularly, say, mental health may be more prevalent in certain portions of our student body, but understanding where it's coming from could be really critical to trying to help reduce the amount of.
Right. So just to kind of follow on with that comment, I mean, my own personal experience, this was the first year the kids weren't wearing masks, and we were sick all the time this fall and winter. I mean, I think a lot of other families had that, so it'd be interesting to see what the data looks like next year. So that was a good follow on. And then one question I had was with this committee and everything, which is going to be really great work, would be, you know, the high-level overview looks really good, like a good place to start, but specifically, how can this proposed team enable more students to come to school? You know, I think that, that part felt a little missing to me out of it, where it's like, you're going to have policy, but then kind of what Stephen was saying, like, understanding the root causes to then figure out how we get the kids back in school, you know?
Well, I think that, were you going to jump in? Sorry.
But I don't want to jump in.
So you caught it corner of my eye. I, I was going to say, I think, I think that, again, goes back to making sure that we have a foundation of consistency so that whether it's in school A, B, or C, in the same circumstance of a student's attendance is, again, being coded the right way, tracked the right way, and then in turn responded to in the right way. You know, that, I think, may not be happening.
Yeah.
And that seemed actually to be an aha moment for the folks who attended this workshop as they had their, their individual meetings. I wasn't at the workshop, so I don't know exactly how it played out, but I think there was time in the day where they got together, they talked about, and they realized, huh, we may not be doing this the same way.
Yeah.
Again, it's not to lay blame, it just, it is what it is, but there's a, there's an element there that we need as a starting point, and then the response of what happens, you know, next, so.
And then one other thing, too, I was thinking about with this committee, post-COVID world, right? You were sick with COVID, you had to stay home for a couple days. That could be hard, because if you have a cold, a cold lasts seven to ten days, right? So then her, whatever comes out of this working group, is it going to be, parents going to feel they have to send their kid to school sick and then get everyone else sick? We go through this debate at my office all the time. We have the luxury of, we could do remote work, so if you're sick, everyone's like, stay home, stay home, stay home. School's different, we don't have that luxury. So it's something maybe for that policy committee to kind of think about as well.
Doctor Branson.
Christine, do you want to go? I don't want you to lose your thought.
No, it's okay, I can hold it.
So I have a couple of things, and I think this is to your point, Mike, like, I want to make sure that when this work is being done, that this isn't, so I understand the coding and making sure. So my first question is, excused versus unexcused? So I've been a parent in this district a long time. I actually, so I believe that an excused absence is still an absence. That doesn't go away. So if they're absent one time and they have a note, they're still absent one time, right? So I think that as we think about those sorts of things, those are important distinctions. My, I have a child who's been in this district, she's eleventh grade, so I'm kind of like, hmm, when I send a note in, when do I not send a note? So I totally agree that that needs to be cleaned up. What I want to make sure, though, as this work moves forward, and not so much with the policy, although definitely part of that group, but the larger group looking at this, is that we own this. This is not, parents need to do this, children need to do the, like a Band-Aid or punitive measure. You don't, like, and I know that that's probably not where it's headed, but I have this fear when I'm looking at this, like, ooh, we want kids to want to be in our building. We want kids to say, oh, I have to be there because blank, not, oh, I don't really have to be, like, that's, that's not a problem of the family or the child, that's a problem of what we're doing. Like, so I feel like we have to look at both sides, and I think when these things start to come down, it becomes very much, we, there are measures put in place. If you're absent this many times, it's going to look like, and I just want to be really careful, because if we have chronic absenteeism, that's a, that's a, that's an us issue, that's a district issue, that's not necessarily a particular child issue. So that's my first point. And my second one is this work-life balance, so kind of with this COVID piece, with the illnesses. I also think COVID also taught people a little bit differently about how to take care of themselves in other ways, and there's this less of a, like, of taking a mental health day, I think, became more of a, you realized during COVID, huh, the world doesn't shut down when I have to miss school or work. And in some ways, that's, that can be healthy, as long as it doesn't go too far. And so it's like, how do we, but I just think those have to be part of this conversation, because I think, along with the illness piece, I think people realized, huh, life does go on if I need to take a break. And I think families started to embrace that a little bit, and I, and I don't know if that is, I think that's probably a good thing, you know? And so I think we need to be really thoughtful about those sorts of pieces, because I think this is much larger than how it's being coded, or I think that these are issues within, and we really need to think carefully about that.
I just wanted to add on to that, because I do agree with that, because COVID taught us how to work on our own, so if you need to miss a day of school because you're not feeling well, it's less of like, I need to be in school because, you know, I won't be able to make it up, but if I'm, you know, kind of not feeling well today or just needing a break, I know that I can catch up on my work well, or even, you know, sleep in and do some of the work from home and still be fully caught up the next day. So some of it does come from that, and it's not necessarily leaving people behind if they have the skills to be caught up when they're absent. So that's another flip side to look at, is not necessarily always reducing absences, but increasing the tools people have to not be negatively impacted by absences when they are necessary.
Jump in here for a second. I think the focus on the reasons is really important, that if we're going to take measures that we hope will, you know, perhaps improve this, then we need to understand why it's happening in the first place. And when we do that, when we try to collect that information, I think it's very important, and this has also been a theme that's been coming out, is to do it in sort of, you know, again, a non-punitive and non-judgmental way. So if we're, you know, going to parenting, just like, well, your kids are missing a lot of school, explain yourself. You know, you're not, we're not really going to, I think, get very far with improving this, you know, this issue from that, that there needs to be a little bit more of a, we really want to know so that we can do our part. If there's anything that we can do, it's sort of, again, like, the district as a partner, how do we work together to potentially address or help, you know, whatever might be going on, rather than, you know, just saying, well, but the handbook policy says that you have to, you know, be doing this, and kids should be in school for X, Y, and Z reasons. I think it's also important to remember that a lot of the, when we look at the data about chronic absenteeism, we say, well, you know, kids who are chronically absent are, you know, seven times more likely for X and more likely to do Y. It's important to remember that these are statistical correlations and not necessarily causation factors, that the same external factor that causes students to be not on grade level or to drop out of high school are often external factors that are part of the causation of why they're not coming to school. And so it's always important to just not look at kind of monocausal explanations.
And so it's always important to just not look at kind of monocausal explanations, and, you know, to find that just because two things are correlated means that, oh, we just, you know, if we can find a way to fix this one thing, then the other thing will just change, because they're very often external factors that are affecting, that are affecting both.
Very true.
Yes, good.
I made it. Still got that thought in your head.
Barely. The point I wanted to make, not even sure if it's relevant anymore, but we'll try, is one thing you talked about, MJ, you talked about, look, you know, a lot of this data snapshot is really sort of summary data, looking at, you know, larger global pieces. The piece that I wanted to mention is, we're looking at one screen here, you have, through this process, we have the ability to look at student details, so we can hone in on a school, we can hone in on students, we can see what the purpose of their absence was. We can see if they were out sick with medical for seven days in a row, and they were in quarantine, versus they're missing every Monday and every Friday. And we can do analysis, looking at individuals as well as, you know, schools and grade spans and things like that. The intent is about providing the tiered interventions that these students need, so that they want to come to school, feel safe coming to school, and are able to come to school and participate. So I wholeheartedly agree, there's no intent of anything being punitive, it's about, we know that we can accomplish what we need to accomplish with students when they're in the building, we need our kids here to be able to do the work we need to do with them. So we need to figure out what the root cause is and what's going on. And this isn't for anybody who's out sick, or took a long weekend, or a mental health day, these are kids that are chronically missing a significant amount of school, that that's what the purpose of this tool really is for us as a district leadership team, to be able to, it was ironic, because when the team came back, this, the team that's helping us set this portal up, had just released this version for us to start to look at, to give feedback, and the team members that had come back from this conference were like, oh my gosh, this is exactly what we need, to be able to really hone in and not just say, ooh, yeah, we have a lot of kids absent today, but to hone in and see where are trends that we couldn't have seen before without this level of data, that we just felt like there was a lot of kids absent, but now we know it's really this particular group of kids, and why aren't they coming to school? We need to dig deeper and figure out what that cause is, and what they are not getting here that they need, or what we can do to help them feel comfortable and want to attend school. So just wanted to point that out.
Any additional comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have some contracts to ratify in open session. So the first, we have a couple of motions that we're going to be making. First is the superintendent's contract, and so we met in executive session after the last meeting and approved a 3% increase for Dr. Brand's salary for the 23, 24 school year, and I would entertain a motion to approve that. Motion by Dr. Bryson.
Sure.
And second by Ms. Burns. All in favor? And that is unanimous. Secondly, Dr. Brand's contract extends, we're in the second year of the current three-year contract, and at the end of the second year, the school committee has the option to extend the contract for up to another two years beyond the third year, which the school committee, again, has decided to exercise. So I would accept a motion to extend Dr. Brand's contract, and this is to the 25, 26 school year. Motion by Mr. Fennelly, and second by Mr. Turner. All in favor? And that is unanimous. And we look forward to your continued leadership in our district. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, and I look forward to nothing but that. I appreciate your confidence in my work and look forward to continuing to partner with you. Thank you. All right, and next, we have the educational assistant contract. So earlier today, in executive session, we voted to ratify the educational assistant contract, and we need to do, again, an open session. Before doing so, I want to thank everyone who worked many, many, many hours on this negotiation and on putting this contract together, and from our team, Mr. Fennelly is our school committee representative, to the bargaining team, and then also Mr. Rogero, and Andrea Stern Armstrong, and Alice Brown Legrand, who spent, as I said, many, 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 many hours working this contract through, and also want to express our appreciation to our educational assistants for all the work they do in our district every day. So I would entertain a motion to approve the educational assistance contract. Motion for Mr. Fennelly?
I would happily make that motion, having been part of that team.
Motion for Mr. Fennelly, second by Dr. Bryson, and all in favor. And how did you name this? And that brings us to public comment. We had no one sign up for public comment, is there anyone who'd like to make one? Present at the meeting? Seeing no public comment, we will move to old business, Spanish exchange trip update memo. Thank you, yes. In your packet, there is an update from Ms. Pietro regarding the world language, from the World Language Department and the Spanish exchange trip. So this is a trip that you previously approved, and fortunately, well, good news and some challenges with this, the total representatives, or the total participation rate was a little bit lower than is what is necessary to help make this trip go, if you will, this exchange ago. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes to try and explore an alternative approach, and as outlined in the memo, the alternative approach is to partner with the neighboring school community, Chelmsford High School, who by happenstance were just looking to do the very same exact trip. So the proposal is to join with Chelmsford in order to, in order to meet the thresholds that are necessary, it's outlined a little bit more in the memo there. I will say that I've talked with council about this, just this idea of partnering with another school district, is there any, are there any issues from a legal standpoint that administration of school committees should be concerned about? The response to that was no, as long as there's nothing in the original agreement with the travel company that would in any way not be able to be delivered, or executed, or realized. If there's not, which I'm told that there is not, all aspects of the trip can still take place as was presented, and there's no, there's no legal concern here that the, that our council has, Mr. Wa. You know, the one question that I wanted, though, to bring to the committee is whether or not you wanted to revote this. You did vote the original, obviously, the original trip, so if you're comfortable with leaving this as just a general sense of the committee, that certainly is in your prerogative. I also respect if you wanted more information, or, and/or if you wanted to revote this, but otherwise, I think we're in a good place overall.
Ms. Burns.
So personally, I don't think there, in my personal opinion, I don't think we need to go before a vote, because we still only vote on Wilmington students in our participation, regardless of that, so I don't see a need to bring it forth. And in fact, I kind of, it's disappointing that we didn't have enough in Wilmington, but I think this actually could be an even bigger opportunity for our students to engage with another school district and partnerships between our mutual districts. So I really do think that, I think this is a, could be one of those blessings in disguise for our students and for our school districts, together to join forces in this new venture, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I also agree, I don't think that this requires a revote, I think that we can just leave this where it is with this adjustment.
Great. All right, thank you.
All right, that brings us to subcommittee reports.
So this kind of came up, my time's a little bit limited, there's two things that came up that I want to report on. The School Wellness Advisory Council did meet last week, and unfortunately, neither Mr. Exey or I were in attendance, but we do have the minutes. As you know, Mary Palin will be, is working on a plan to serve lunches on half-days starting in the new school year, so, and breakfasts will be provided to all students. The mornings may look different with the new start times and bus routes, so she's kind of working on figuring that out. Right now, the administrators are meeting with Mary Palin and Becky Brown regarding the best approach in serving breakfast for students, taking into consideration different start times, whether it would be, you know, it would be optimal for students not to have to eat within their classrooms, so that's all a work in progress. I know Ms. Stinson and Ms. Brown have all, have been putting it in their back pocket, but hoping to bring forth a new curriculum called CATCH, which is an early childhood classroom and family curriculum emphasizing healthy nutrition behaviors. We're hoping to pilot it last year, excuse me, we're hoping to pilot it, not this year with, because of the transitions within the Wildwood being at the middle school, but the following year, so they're taking shape with hoping to find someone interested to pilot this potentially health and wellness curriculum for, specifically for the pre-school, early childhood level students. And so they'll be meeting with the Mrs. Walsh and McCabe at the Botwell to discuss about going, finding a teacher to go forth to pilot this in the year, starting in the school year 2024. They're also in looking to, and I think they've reached out to Audrey with regards to finding a student rep or representatives, to, for student representation on this subcommittee, which I think is a very vital area of wellness, especially within our schools, so that, we're still looking for student reps who will be interested in joining this advisory committee for next year, and taking into considerations our start and end times, the meeting times for this subcommittee will have to change as well with regards to the start time of the meeting, so stay tuned with regards to what that may look like. And the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, I'm not really sure how many of you received the MASCE policy updates, but the MASCE president, Stacy Rizzo, and the executive director, Glenn Kutter, sent out a memo to all school committee members regarding the United States House, proposals could hurt children, borrower, I could talk up, it'd be dangerous, borrowers, and undermine education in Massachusetts. If I could just read it, the opening, just briefly, it states that "The ongoing stalemate in lifting the debt ceiling puts at risk the nation's full faith in credit, and would impose cuts that could hurt children and undermine education, raise costs for families, and set back economic growth. Would also mean slashing critical funding while advancing proposals that add over $3 trillion to deficits through tax benefits skewed to the wealthy and bigger corporations." While the Senate plans, while the Senate plan invests an additional $11 billion to improve education while lowering everyday costs of essentials like childcare for families, the House proposal could cut a broad range of critical programs by 22%, which could have devastating impacts on children and students from pre-K to college. In Massachusetts, and I'm just going to highlight the impacts, but I avoid this correspondence to you, in Massachusetts, the House bill would cut funding for low-income students, cut support for students with disabilities/mental health support for students, eliminate student debt relief, and make college more expensive to 380,000 Massachusetts residents. Under those are explanations on how it would impact it in more detail, as I said, I will get it out to you all if you're interested in addressing it in any capacity or way, but something at the very least to think about, I think, would be helpful, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Are there any other subcommittee reports? All right, correspondence?
None this evening.
Future notable dates, May 29th, Memorial Day Parade, and of course, Memorial Day and the Memorial Day Ceremony at Wildwood Cemetery. May 30th, the Senior Athletic Awards and Scholarship Night. May 31st, the meeting of, joint meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee, School Committee, Finance Committee, and Select Board to discuss the MSBA project here at the high school. On the 31st, June 1st is the community event for Transitions to New Schools, sponsored by PAWS. June 2nd, Scholarship Night for the class of 2023. June 4th, graduation. June 5th, high school band banquet. June 8th, the underclass awards. June 14th is our next regular session meeting, and June 15th, the middle school moving on ceremony on the Common. And June 20th, four weeks from yesterday, last day of school. Hard to believe, less than four weeks of school left. And with that, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Two more things tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, additional events.
There is the Ireland Information Session tomorrow evening, and there's also a chamber music performed by the High School Strings Group tomorrow evening as well.
In the courtyard.
Both here.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other events that we have missed?
The 4th and 5th grade strings concert is next Tuesday on the Wilmington Green Town Common. It's a nice show, actually.
Very good. Yes, thank you for.
5th grade strings concert. All right, anything else? We're going to need a third sheet of paper, extended events somehow, all compressed into the next few weeks. Ms. Burns.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second? All right, second from Dr. Bryson, all in favor? And we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.